It's just after 7 o'clock. I'll call this meeting to order. And you can't hear. Is that better? Okay, perfect. Thank you. And Donovan, can you note attendance for roll call?
Sure.
Perfect. Thank you. And everyone that's able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the law of the courts and one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as written and to add the amended item number 7A, I think at least that one that Donovan wanted, for the annex, the permanent public drainage utility easement agreement.
And we will entertain a friendly amendment for also to add the public hearing related to item 7B, which is the PUD amendment application for Encore.
That's correct.
Perfect. Thank you. Just for clarification for everyone in the audience, item 7A is the Lila Annex Property Drainage and Utility Easement Dedication Agreement. Typically, that would be a consent agenda item. It is a last-minute add, and since it's a last-minute add for council, we'll put it on the regular agenda so everyone has an opportunity to review it. And then 7B, the public hearing, has been noticed. It just wasn't on the agenda, so we will add that public hearing. Councilmember Housnik made a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Abstain. Motion carries. Our next item is our open forum. Open forum is your opportunity to discuss any items or to give council feedback on any items of your discretion. And we have two open forum. Ron Schaefer. Welcome, Ron.
Ron Schaefer, Forest Lake. I notice on the back of the page here, there's a discussion on Clear Lake Association funding request. If that's for weed killing like they do for Forest Lake, I'd like to see that abandoned on both lakes. The weeds weren't there when the lake was made, and the reason that the weeds are there is because people fertilize their grass, and the stuff runs in the lake, and the next thing you know, you've got weeds. Because I don't use the lake at all, I don't want to put any money in it. And the same thing that happened to Clear Lake, they got some money. And the other thing I wanted to talk about was SRC. It seemed like the administrator here favors getting rid of them. Well, I want to tell you, I've been here for 40-some years, and they have been great. And I don't want any change. I think that they will continue to do a good job, and I want to put my vote for them. Thank you.
Next up, Susan Young. Welcome.
Howdy. Susan Young, 9950 199th Street North. I am part of a citizens group that is composed of Forest Lake and local residents and business owners in what we're calling the downtown area of Forest Lake, essentially Lake and Broadway and north on Lake. And we've been getting together for three weeks now as an ad hoc group, realizing that our businesses there are in serious trouble. And we've been looking for things that either we can do as ad hoc citizens or that we can advocate for because we realize that that area has city, county, and state overlaps and the Lake Association overlaps. Quite frankly, the businesses there are in deep trouble. Last summer was horrific for them because of the construction on the lofts and because of the street that was blocked for the whole summer. It has not helped that the building on the corner of Lake and 61 has been under construction or renovation or whatever for a long period of time, and that makes it difficult for people to get to and from the businesses there. It also doesn't help that 35 is under destruction, and folks are going up 61 at quite frankly a high rate of speed as they're going through downtown to try and avoid the backups on 35. The speed at which people are going are making it dangerous for folks to cross 61 either at the roundabouts, or there's a lot of folks that are ignoring the light when people punch the light that's a little bit farther north on Lake Street. The group as a whole, we've got members from the chamber and members from the businesses and someone who sits on the EDA and some of us that are residents and interested people. We're hoping that, one, that that street will be the highest and first priority as soon as the asphalt plants open this spring, that that is dealt with. There is some understanding that that is now going to be a one-way, and the businesses would have talked and have are wondering why and whether or not that shouldn't be a two-way just for access to the businesses. It is a two-way.
Sweet.
Thank you for -- because that was their understanding, and they were concerned about that. So that's awesome. The speed at which people are going, one of the business owners has been trying to help people cross the street, especially since some of the folks in the Lighthouse Lofts and the folks from Cherrywood Point who would like to access the businesses on the other side of 61. We don't all move as quickly as we used to. Just saying. Has no idea what it has to do with, but I don't move as quickly as I used to. And with the speeds, I realize that that is, again, a county and city joint responsibility, but if there could be some increased monitoring and enforcement, that would be deeply appreciated. There's also some confusion about signs that are allowed and not allowed. And business owners are getting a little bit of a mixed message. The ordinance says that there are provisions for temporary signage, but they're being told, no, you can't do that. And so some clarification on the part of the city and quite frankly, some indulgence on the part of the city to try and help them as they as they're trying to keep their businesses open, to be very honest. We want Forest Lake to be even better than it sounds, and quite frankly, businesses are a big part of that. There is a Highway 61 promotion that's going to be going on May 5. I personally hope that changes can be made, especially the paving of that street by then, so that as folks are attracted to that area north with part of that Highway 61 promotion, that folks would say, yep, Forest Lake is a safe place to be, got some great businesses that we want to patronize, and we will come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At the close of open forum, I will entertain a motion for consent agenda items.
Madam Mayor, I request removal of item seven, or excuse me, F. I've moved ahead on the agenda. Item F. Thanks.
6F you're talking about?
6F.
And you propose all other items as being approved?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to remove item B, as I was not on the council at that time.
Very good. We will be removing items 6B and 6F from the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve all remaining items?
I'll make a motion.
There's a motion.
And I'll second it as amended.
And a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Abstain. All right, consent agenda approved. Amended consent agenda item.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the City Council's special meetings from February 19, 2019.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second to approve the special meeting minutes from February 19. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Abstain.
Abstain.
Motion carries. Next item is item 6F, which is going to be Resolution 3111903, which is for support of local input on changes in the PSA. Chief Newman, can you walk us through, actually, let's get your questions first.
Yeah, this might solve our issue here. I recognize there's likely neither a formal contractual or non-contractual conflict of interest for me on this item, but the issue involves my employer, so my preference is to abstain.
Very good. Any other questions on this particular item or areas of concern? Very good with that. I will entertain a motion to approve item 6F.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item 6F.
Motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Abstain.
Abstain.
One abstention. Motion carries. All right, we are into our regular agenda, new agenda item 7A, which is the Lila Annex Property Drainage and Utility Easement Dedication Agreement. Since this was a relatively last-minute add for council, Donovan, can you just give us a quick update on where we are and what is in front of us?
Sure. I will.
And while he's pulling that up again, this is typically a consent agenda item, just wanted to give it discussion, given it's a relatively last-minute add.
I'd like to present the easement dedication agreement for the Lila Annex property. Video is coming up. The property is located 121 11th Avenue Southwest, Southeast, I'm sorry. And as a shown here on the aerial, bounded in blue, blue-green, as part of the approval of the recent planning commission approval of a conditional use amendment to expand the structure there containing the Lakes International Language Academy to provide additional classrooms.
Hold on just a minute.
Sure.
Get all screens up.
There we go. Done. Thank you. We're out.
Now we're on board. I'll talk to our AV person about this. Fortunately, he's in Florida at the moment. And so the city requested and Lila agreed to dedicate a five-foot wide utility easement along their southern boundary, 11th Avenue Southeast, and the western boundary, First Street Southeast. In particular, this will aid in the reconstruction of 11th Avenue this coming summer to allow a little more room for construction activities. And the way the city does this is a common thing with the city, we actually see a few of these, is that we do an easement dedication agreement in which the owner signs and then the city also signs. And as per the city attorney's direction, anything that has a city signature requires, you know, city approval. And so we often put these on the consent agenda. And of course, it's the city, the council member's discretion if they want to make it a regular agenda item, but this is a good opportunity to just explain kind of what this process is and also to, you know, if to have, you know, some discussion with if you want, but the staff recommendation is to recommend approval of the, to accept this easement.
Any questions for Donovan? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
My thing would be make sure that both parties are in agreement. Were any questions on that, Donovan, do you know, or?
No, no, and we actually had the signatures from the property owner, from the Lila administrators.
Seems to be like it's pretty much cut and dry, but it's just my opinion.
Then with that, I'd make a motion to approve the Annex Property Drainage and Utility Easement Dedication Agreement with Lila.
And I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion on this item? There are none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Abstain. Motion carries. Next, item 7B, final PUD amendment application for Encore Apartments. Donovan, I believe you're going to lead us through this one as well?
Yes, just heading west on 11th Avenue. We come to the current site of the Mill Pond and Maple Court Apartments, soon to be renamed Heritage Heights and Encore Point, no.
Legacy Point.
Legacy Point, sorry. This is the intersection of Fourth Street Southwest and 11th Avenue Southwest. And this whole area has a single owner, and it's currently a planned unit development. This, what's proposed is a planned unit development amendment to construct a 91-unit four-story apartment building on the site. And so if you look here, 11th Avenue is in the bottom of your screen, Fourth Street is on the left, and the 9th Avenue Southwest cul-de-sac to the north on the top. And so what's proposed is the apartment access on Fourth Street to have a shared parking area with the other two apartment buildings, in addition to underground parking, about 66 spaces, additional recreation space, including dog run and, well, you know, additional recreation space and access to the Harvard Creek Trail over here on the right to the east, and stormwater facilities in this southwest corner of the site, which is also, as a kind of a doubleheader for this project, this is the site of that easement vacation petition that we'll soon discuss. The, this is, this project received preliminary approval in October, and so what's coming before you is the first look at it for some of the, for some of the council. So I'd like to give a brief review of it with some of the main points. As I mentioned, the new driveway, this location on Fourth Street, and 91 units with four stories. And there's something of a smorgasbord of additional approvals required, which includes a FEMA floodplain redesignation, a letter of map revision, which they did receive. And tonight, as the consideration of the vacation of drainage utility easement, which will precede the installation of a new utility easement, wetland replacement, and the county approval for the Harvard Creek Trail connection, and also approval with Rice Creek Water District, which centers on the stormwater and sediment erosion control. The, with PUDs, there's a flexibility that is requested and is part of it in order to make a better project and attempt to meet some city goals. In this case, we have a series of flexibilities that include a rear building setback, a maximum building height, maximum percentage of one-bedroom apartments, increased density, minimum dwelling unit size, and I'll go into these, you know, as we get back to the site plan. Required parking spaces, and then multiple family building wall signage is a master sign plan that's been submitted. And then also permit the encroachment of vehicle parking within the five-foot setback area and permit the placement of a dumpster within 10 feet of the 9th Avenue cul-de-sac. So getting back to this site plan, so on a corner property, there are actually two rear setbacks. And so flexibility sought to put, you know, place this building, proposed building closer to this northern property line and closer to the eastern property line. So those are two of the flexibilities. A 50-foot tall building is proposed. Code currently allows 45. Code does require that 20% of, only a maximum of 20% of the units in apartment building be one-bedroom. As per several other projects we've permitted in the last few years, including Lighthouse Lofts, Gateway Green Apartments, Timber Ridge, Arbor Ridge, developers have come to us with what seems to be in line with national demographic trends towards more household sizes, more single-family, single-family households of empty nesters, young renters, people choosing to rent rather than own. And so this, you know, this request of flexibility seems to be in response to market forces. There's a proposed basically 26 dwelling units per acre for the entire site, including the other two apartment buildings, where the zoning code maximum is 15 dwellings per acre. They've also requested a 450-square-foot apartment, 12 of those in the project, where 600 square foot is the minimum size in the code. Also regarding the parking, currently, there is a basically 2.1 parking spaces per unit requirement. Again, with other projects, we've seen that with smaller units, fewer bedrooms, that we have an impact of having fewer drivers. And so the request is for 1.95 spaces per dwelling unit, almost two versus the 2.1. And also, the request is to have a wall signage that exceeds what's really the monument sign for neighborhoods. The zoning code doesn't really have a specific multiple-family wall signage allowance, but essentially, I've taken the interpretation that an apartment building is basically a vertical neighborhood. So interpret that as the code would allow one sign for 10 square feet for, you know, building identification and address. And what's proposed is two signs on the four-story level on the east and southern, southern or?
East and west.
East and west elevations, thank you, for two signs of 30 square feet each. And then also, they've requested to do parking within the five-foot setback, which in this case is just allow that shared parking area, much greater efficiency to have all those parking lots joined. And then finally, to allow a dumpster in this area to the north here within 10 feet of the, of the, within the setback, within 10 feet of the public right-of-way. So that kind of lays down the basic flexibilities sought. This did receive preliminary approval from the City Council in October. The Planning Commission reviewed it and voted to recommend City Council approval. They're meeting in February and, I'm sorry, in March. I'm sorry, end of February. And on behalf of taking questions from the Planning Commission. And I just want to point out, this is a two-phase process for your consideration. First of all, is the resolution 04 to actually consider, and then that's the 03111904 for the adoption of the final PUD amendment. And then, then also the next, perhaps if you want to, we can discuss that, then we can move to the easement vacation part of it. Happy to take any questions from the City Council now.
Any questions from council? And before we entertain questions from council, let me just clarify and confirm that we're all on the same page. We're going to do actually a three-step process tonight. So first is to consider the amendment, the final PUD amendment application. That is, there's a draft resolution in your packet on 64. That is 03111904 on page 64. We are then going to have a public hearing for the vacation petition, and then we will consider and a motion on the vacation petition. So three separate steps tonight. So first step is the final PUD amendment application. Any questions of staff?
No. What was exactly the recommendation that the Planning Commission made? I didn't, did they recommend going ahead with the alternates that they wanted?
Yes. I'll give you the list of the recommendations on your screen.
Just want to go over those real quick and?
Sure. Okay, all comments and concerns of the city engineers shall be met prior to the issuance of the building permit. The, all required joint parking and drainage, well, actually deleting the mention of a joint parking agreement, which is not required by the city as advised by the city attorney. But all required drainage utility easements shall be prepared and executed. Any drainage easements without a public use shall be vacated. All required permits from the Rice Creek Water District must be obtained prior to the initiation of construction activities, which involves making sure that all their concerns regarding stormwater are met. The applicant complies with all Wetland Conservation Act requirements, is that our wetlands present on the site. All building and site improvements to be located at least 30 feet from the existing county public right-of-way along 11th Avenue Southwest. This one relates to future right-of-way need for the reconstruction of 11th Avenue Southwest. The applicant receives the required sign and building permits for the signs depicted in the master sign plan. An improvement agreement shall be prepared by the city attorney for execution, including all required financials and charges, including park dedication fee. All required city financial guarantees shall be submitted prior to the initiation of construction activities.
Okay, that's kind of boilerplate stuff, but I mean, there were some things that they were asking for that kind of go beyond our regulations or our zoning, and I just wondered if that was part of the recommendation.
Yeah, there was, I mean, there was discussion, and this is what the, and this is, you know, this was, this was the staff recommendations, you know, which weren't amended, but there was discussion around the wall signage. There was some discussion around the parking requirement, the parking ratio, but the staff recommendations weren't changed, you know, in the approved, in the approval, I mean, recommendation.
Donovan, you had a nice slide that lined up side by side, the variances versus the standards. Can you, is that what?
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, yeah.
I think that's what councilmember Housnik's referring to. And I had some questions on this as well.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands, you know, if their request of flexibility is worth, they are part of that recommendation.
Right.
Like the dwelling unit size, is the Planning Commission recommending the 450 rather than 600 square foot units?
Yeah, they, yeah, they accepted the developer's proposal and then recommended it.
Okay, so that's what I'm driving at. They approved the requested flexibilities that went along with this approval. Okay. That answered my question, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Go ahead.
You know, part, I think the two big discussion points was it's a fairly large building, and it had more to do with both the parking, the signage, and then the number of one-bedroom apartments, being so much larger. And bone of contention with so many one-bedroom apartments is that Forest Lake needs two- and three-bedroom apartments. However, this applicant is primarily all his other buildings, their other buildings are two- and three-bedrooms, so kind of leveled the playing field a little bit, I guess would be.
The other buildings also part of that PUD, that full?
No, I believe they're further down the street, closer to, across from the elementary school. What else have we discussed?
Yeah, I think that was it. You know, this was a lot to unpack, especially not having been in on that preliminary discussion and approval back on October 22. But as I reviewed this, it appeared to me that it had been pretty thoroughly vetted, and the planning commission approvals were noted. But it seems to me as well that there are a lot of PUD flexibilities here, and is this, does this have the potential to present future problems for us and other developments? I mean, for, are we opening a can of worms, proverbial worms, so to speak, by?
Well, certainly, I mean, there's always the law of unintended consequences. But this, in some ways, I believe our zoning code is a little bit antiquated with respect to where the market's gone. And because this is very much in line with these other, with the Lighthouse Lofts, with Timber Ridge, with Arbor Ridge, with the Gateway Green Apartments. You know, one exception is the Common Bond Project, which is affordable housing, which is, you know, bringing some of those larger, you know, unit counts, you know, to meet that need. It's a project that'll come in the spring over by the transit center, you know, on Fitzgerald Trail. And the, you know, in this, and I think probably the And the, you know, in this, and I think probably the largest impact we could see, you know, might be the parking, you know, and that's something we did discuss at planning commission. And in response, the applicant, Mike Keating, from Norhart, you know, pointed out of, you know, what the, kind of the market study they've done, because they actually looked at that building to the north, Mill Pond, three and four, as kind of their basis of their, you know, how should they provide parking for these in order to meet the need? And they came in, I believe it was around 1.8, 1.9 was, you know, spaces per unit was about where they're at with that building that has many more multiple, you know, bedroom units. Because the last thing that, you know, the, you know, an owner would want would be that sort of, you know, the disruption with parking issues, you know, especially come winter time with parking restrictions. And it just, I think creates, you know, tenant instability, because people might move in loving the building, but then if they get their car towed, if they, you know, you know, get plowed in with the snow, it's, they're going to move out. I mean, it's not going to be a long-term proposition, so. And that's kind of the way I think the cities, city leaderships, you know, in the past has looked at these, is that, give me some deference to the private property owners, that they've studied their market, they're not going to produce something that's going to not fulfill their needs, you know, as a business owner.
Kathy, I did attend, I think it was two meetings that the applicant was at in the planning commission. There was very thorough discussion around this.
Okay. Helpful.
And I appreciate your comments, Kathy. My comment was about the whole thing is, you know, I'm comfortable with your assessment of, and the planning commission's assessment, just that anytime you start deviating from the zoning code, that's always a red flag for me. And if we need to change the code, then we need to change code.
I think, so you bring up.
Yeah, that was my concern here, so.
So I think, so I think both of you have made a comment that, you know, what kind of precedent are we setting? And certainly, staff recognizes we do have a history of these projects coming before a planning commission and ultimately to council and looking for variation on parking. These things all kind of go together. It's density, it's mix of bedroom units, and then also the parking impact. And so my question was, not wanting to make a project decision on an overall policy question, my question to staff earlier today was, what is our opportunity to change policy? And I guess I would, maybe a good time to just process with council on where we are in adoption of the comprehensive plan and all of the zoning regulations behind that comprehensive plan. Certainly, there's opportunity for us to reevaluate this at the policy level, recognizing we do need housing for all. And if our code is out of line for what the market wants to bear, we have to hold that intention with what we want for public policy. I have a, I think it's important, and I think we need to address that. I, you know, I've kind of followed this particular project through the paces and am comfortable with the overall project as presented tonight, but I think we do need to step back at the policy level with planning commission and staff and reevaluate that in the future. Because you're right, the next one that comes up would potentially have the same request. And I think that reflects changes in the market and the demographic of who's renting.
It's market pressures, you bet.
I just had one other question, maybe comment. Is there any concern about traffic onto Fourth with the additional?
Well, that's going to be the subject of a lot of county analysis as they begin their design of the road. The city, and the city has some opinions on how those could be improved, because when you have that Fourth Street, you know, intersection, Forest Road, you had a little kink in the road, it's, you know, and just higher traffic speeds, it's not a good situation right now. But I think that's, you know, we do expect the road to be reconstructed. It's in the county's, you know, capital improvement plan, potentially 2022, 2023. And, you know, the city has a lot of opinions, I think some input on this. And, you know, right now, we're told they are going to expand the right-of-way, so we are looking at probably, you know, a left-turn lane within that segment to assist with some, at least some of the turning movements. And we'll see more if this, you know, includes a right-turn lane. I mean, you know, they haven't even begun preliminary design, but that's going to be the subject of a lot of analysis and scrutiny and discussions with county and property owners and the city.
Okay, and I was kind of referencing Fourth with our school buildings along in there, and kind of the increased traffic with, you know, 91 units and additional cars, and so I was wondering if that had been looked at.
Well, as part of the site plan review, we, you know, we did require a healthy distance for that fourth, for that driveway. Ryan, is there anything you'd like to add on the traffic part of this?
Related to the traffic, typically what we see with apartment buildings, it's not like a real hard start-stop, so you get traffic throughout the day, right? Versus something that has set times of starting or dismissal, so you really probably won't notice much traffic increase because of this, an apartment building. Now, if it was a building such as a school, obviously you would see that instant impact, right? So obviously, the county's too, looking at and has looked at the intersection here, and might look at intersection control change, part of the potential future project on County Road 32. So it's not anticipated any impacts and traffic would be occurring because of the result of just this building on Fourth Street.
Okay.
Yeah, I missed one comment. You know, 10 or 12 years ago, under planning commission, that was kind of identified as being more and more of a feeder route, like it or not, it's just the way it is, because there was so much traffic coming down. And that was a dozen years ago. So I think that's what it's going to end up turning out to be, and certainly I've got a plan for it, there's no question about it, so. That's the only comment I had on it, thank you.
As a follow-up to that, just to confirm, we've got the right setbacks for that future reconstruction built into this plan, right? That is all contemplated and, okay.
County reviewed and commented on that.
Perfect, thank you. Other questions or comments related to the request? Resolution for approval is on 64 of your packet. You can either, I will either entertain more questions or a motion.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion then that we approve the adoption of resolution 0311-1904, which approves the final PUD amendment for the Encore Apartments' proposals at 1005 Fourth Street Southwest. Do you want the rest of the paragraph in there? Okay. Providing that the recommendations of the staff and the planning commission are met.
Very good. We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing, hearing none? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. We have a related item on this, and we will, we have a public hearing requirement because of the vacation, and so I will at this time open a public hearing on ponding and flowage easement vacation petition. Is there anybody that would like to speak on the public hearing? And I'll ask one more time, anybody that would like to speak on the public hearing? With that, I will close the public hearing and bring the conversation back to council and staff. Donovan, do you want to walk us through?
Sure.
What's being proposed?
So I'm going to show on your screen the utility plan for the Encore Apartments. Currently, there is wetland and stormwater pond on that southwest corner of the property, and a flowage and drainage easement dating back to 2001 with the original development of the site. Because of the increased impervious surface, the building, walkways, parking lots, driveway access, there's a need for increased storage capacity and stormwater treatment. And so basically, the city, it's a city, this current easement needs to be vacated and enlarged, and the easiest, the cleanest way to do that is through a complete kind of elimination of it and then a rededication, so we don't have old and new, you know, or any kind of conflicting lines. Just makes it simpler in the property records. The city right now is still reviewing the actual, you know, extent of the proposed easement area, so we don't, actually don't have that easement agreement before you. But the way the resolution is written, the 0311-1905, it gives a condition that the current easement should not be vacated until the new one is dedicated, so that, there's a safeguard there, so that, you know, the flowage and drainage easement will still exist. However, I view it as a temporary condition, and will soon, you know, complete the review and get this on a city consent agenda to actually dedicate a new easement for that area to serve the proposed new development.
Quick question now, so expected timing of the rededication?
I expect it to be on the next council agenda.
Within the next month or so. Any questions of staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion, or certainly some questions if there are any.
I move adoption of resolution number 03-11-19-05, vacating a ponding and flowage easement located on blocks 14 and 15, Walker and Goodines, addition to the city of Forest Lake, Washington County, Minnesota.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Next agenda item, 7C, ordinance of 687 and 688, which is revisiting our WAC and SAC updates. Patrick, I believe you're walking us through this?
Yes, just a point of business is that we request that each ordinance is voted on separately, even though they're together on the agenda. All of this 687 is doing is codifying the changes in the water access charges. As you recall, in December, with the change in the rate study and the update of rates, we changed the way we calculated the mixed family and mixed-use buildings for the WAC charges. This ordinance, we put that also in the fee schedule, which was adopted earlier. All this does is make the language match the rate study and the fee schedule. So this is the technical portion, finally, of this, and hopefully we'll be finished with that. Ordinance 688, there is no calculations changes, it's still based on the Met Council determination, but being that we're changing a few of the fees and things, we want that to be consistent as well.
Very good. Any questions of staff?
It's one of those painful decisions we had to make a while back, and it went through a lot of discussion, and so just on this thing, I don't see anything that's different from what we were discussing back then.
I'll just echo your comments. This is the final dotting of i's and crossing of t's of what has been, geez, council member Hussnick's, a painful assessment. This is the final portion. Certainly, it's had a lot of discretion over the last few months.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 687, amending Title V, Chapter 51, Section 51-06 regarding charges for water connection and usage, and Title III, Chapter 35, Section 35-03 regarding water system area charges.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. And our next item is ordinance 688, which is in your packet on page 106, which is the sewer component. Ordinance 687.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 688, amending Title V, Chapter 52, Sections 52.04 and 52.05, and Title III, Chapter 35, Section 35.03 regarding sewer rates and charges.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Very good. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. All right, onward, we are up to 7D, consideration to temporarily suspend issuance of new tobacco Patrick, are you walking us through this?
Sure. The resolution in front of you will put a moratorium on the issuance of any new tobacco licenses for new establishments in the city of Forest Lake. This resolution does not preclude any of the current establishments from renewing their licenses or changing ownership of the licenses, or changing if a corporate structure changes, changing that. All that does is, this does is temporarily put a hold on any brand-new license for brand-new entities in the city, giving the time for both the council and the staff to evaluate the policy regarding all kinds of tobacco products that have been in front of us recently and has caused some controversy.
Very good. Questions of staff?
I have a quick question. Is this, when you say tobacco licenses, so this is all establishments, like gas stations, things?
Yes.
Other than that, okay, not just like a?
Right, if there's brand-new ones that have never had a license before and have vacation.
And the term of the resolution is for six months, is that, am I reading that right?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Yes. I don't know if I have any further questions. I have some discussion items for a discussion portion, but any questions before we move into a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, absolutely.
My only question would be is, do we have anybody in the pipeline that was looking to get a license and now it's going to be put on hold for six months?
We have no applications on file or that have were received in the last, since the last month or so, I believe.
Thank you.
Any further questions or clarifications?
I move to adopt resolution 03-11-19-06, temporarily suspending issuance of new tobacco licenses for the sale of tobacco, tobacco products, nicotine or tobacco-related devices.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion on this item? I guess I would like to, so a couple comments. First to note, we did, council did receive an email of support from the Washington County Department of Public Health, supporting the resolution that we are considering tonight. Anytime we are interfering in commerce, I think it's in our, it's our responsibility to move as quickly as we can, and so although tonight we allow for a six-month moratorium, I would encourage staff and council to speed that up as much as possible, recognizing, again, we are interfering with commerce, and there are all sorts of businesses that potentially could be impacted by this. But on the flip side, I also recognize that we've had some challenges in our community, and I, as I look at our current ordinance, I have concerns over whether it adequately addresses all of the different ways that tobacco can be sold in our community. We have essentially in that process around, especially around vaping, there is a manufacturing component that concerns me of, as far as concentrations and mix, and that is, our code is currently fairly silent in all of those considerations, as far, also as far as number of licenses allowed and density. We've certainly had a fair
We've certainly had a fairly robust conversation in this community over the last several months. And so in my mind, time to take a pause, take a timeout, as expeditiously as possible to readdress those items. But I think it's important that we take that pause and ultimately it's our responsibility to keep these things out of the hands of you, so.
Just one quick comment if you don't mind. I don't care how much you hate tobacco. A lot of us do, but it's still a legal entity. It's still a legal business. And so, the temporary thing I think is a good idea, is like you say, to get a chance to fall back on it and take a look at it, but we don't want to lose sight of the fact that it's still a legal business and I know it's regulated and all that and we do have to make sure that everybody follows those regulations, but we don't want to lose sight of that. And so, thank you for your comment.
Yeah, absolutely. Other points of discussion?
No, I just, I just want to say thanks to city leadership and staff and Mayor Bain and my fellow council members. You know, this has been a pretty passionate topic for me, just for acknowledging that this is a problem and recognizing the need to reevaluate. And I, I just think that it, it also sends a message to our businesses that currently call Forest Lake home and we want them to call Forest Lake home. And anyone that may wish to do business here in the future, that we do take this issue seriously. So it is an opportunity to step back and, and reevaluate.
Very good. Other comments?
I will also point out, we will have on a future work plan session, an opportunity for council to give staff to, feedback to staff on what they would like to see as part of a study. So that actually can be work planned and that work plan will be visible to the public. Those who want to provide input, certainly there's opportunity to do so, but I want that to be a part of a public work plan and not something where we appear to go into a dark hole for six months and come out on the other side with an answer. So I think we owe that visibility to the public, so.
Any others? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item seven E, hanger E licenses. Patrick, are you taking us through this one as well?
Oh, Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, I'm, the liaison for this, for the Airport Commission and that we had Dan hit the high points of that, the changes in the lease and that kind of thing. And, and just to point out exactly what they were, it wasn't really anything earth shattering. It was just things that, to get us back in line with other leases and that kind of thing. So, the, the Airport Commission recommended approval, they recommended to the city council to approve the, the hanger lease changes that were made, that Dan described, so.
A quick follow up is, or follow up question, was there any, have there been any changes to the lease language that was workshopped with us about a month ago? Or is it-
There was some.
There were some minor?
Yeah.
Okay.
There wa, I mean, there wasn't any changes from what we discussed in the workshop.
Okay.
You know, that, it was all stuff that Dan had, he just laid it out to the Airport Commission. That's basically what it amounted to.
So we're seeing an unamended version of-
Based on, I make a motion that we approve the changes in the hanger leases for the rental hangars there at Forest Lake Airport.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item?
I think it's good to get this language in line with our other lease language and some good work has already been done in this area, so.
In, in my recollection, it was modeled after South St. Paul. Correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Madam Mayor, I'll be abstaining just to my lack of knowledge and the overall process followed.
Yeah.
Fair, fair enough. Very good. With that, I will call the vote. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain?
Abstain.
And motion carries. Final item on our action agenda is the ACE hardware invoices.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the ACE hardware invoices.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain?
Abstain.
One abstention, motion carries. We have a discussion portion of our agenda tonight. As a reminder, discussion items are for that purpose only. We won't be taking any action tonight. This is our opportunity to review a topic, provide some discussion or guidance back to staff and anything decided tonight or anything discussed tonight will be brought back for future action. With that, item eight A is the Clear Lake Association funding request. Patrick, do you want to walk us through what was requested?
Sure. I met with the Clear Lake, Lake Association, who apologized that they couldn't make it tonight. They are trying some new weed treatment for the lake. And with new weed treatment, the cost has obviously gone up quite a bit for that, for that treatment. Previously, the, the city has given the association five thousand dollar annual, annually and then requested funding, they've requested funding in seven thousand dollars in two thousand and eighteen. Bottom line here is that they're requesting that the, the city raise their contribution to twenty thousand dollars for the weed treatment this year because of the added expense to, to Clear Lake, which would be a thirty five thousand dollars total. Part of the basis is not only that there's a, a number of residents, obviously, that are, use the lake and are, are, live along the lake and are taxpayers, but they also believe that it's a, an asset to the community and that a lot of non-lake people come on and use it on a casual basis. So it's worth, worthwhile for the city to invest in one of the natural resources and try to keep the lake as free and clear of weeds as possible.
Patrick, was it five, it was five thousand last year and then first-
Uh, it's my understanding that it was five thousand dollars prior in, yes, five thousand dollars. In eighteen, they requested seven thousand dollars. I don't know what you gave them, but prior to that, it was five thousand.
I think they did get the seven thousand. As my bad memory tells me, that's what we did.
Yeah, but it looks like prior to that, it was five thousand and then last year they asked for a two thousand dollar bump. And now this year being that the, the increase is quite dramatic. They're, they've got a twenty five thousand dollar gap in what they have to what it's going to cost them to treat the lake and they're asking for a twenty thousand dollar contribution. One of the also thing, also that they believe that if this treatment is a success, they won't have to treat the lake for a, another three years. So they may not be coming back after that. I'm not, you know, I'm not sure of all the chemicals and the, how effective it is, but if, if it happens that way, that may be true.
Sounds like it's a little bit more of a front load funding in them.
Yes, yes. I think the treatment that, that they outlined in our conversation was that it's a front load treatment. It has to be treated continuously throughout the summer to be effective. But once it's treated throughout the summer, hopefully it'll actually really do a good job and, and stop the weeds from coming back in the future years and probably have to go spot treat them if I'm, if I don't miss my guess when that, when the next few years.
One thing I want, I'd like to make clear, I mean, we had a comment earlier about, at the open forum, about the weeds in the lake and, and there's some issues with homeowners and that kind of thing. But what they're trying to, to control there are invasive species, aquatic invasive species. It's not just plain lake weeds. And so, one thing that, to me, when they had, or when they came before us here last year, I guess it was about this time, it looked to me like they had really done a good job of, of putting their own money where their mouth was on that thing. And I saw, I felt that was a good idea to, to help them out as much as we could. And the lake is still an asset to all of us, whether you live on it or not. And so, I don't know about the, you know, the twenty thousand dollar thing right now. I think that's up for some, some discussion and what that would do to our budget. But generally speaking, these, these folks on the Clear Lake Association, they do a pretty darn good job of, of putting their mouth where them, or putting where their money where their mouth is, you know what I mean? And really doing a good job that way. So whenever somebody's trying to help themselves, that it, I feel more that we should help them, so.
Patrick, I might have missed this, but in, in this letter, it says that they'll apply for a grant from Washington County.
Yes.
So that's not a guarantee, that's something yet to be done. Okay.
Correct.
Got it.
If this is funded, where does that money come from? What fund?
I would have to, I, I can't tell you that. We have to identify what-
Comes up, all the, the weed treatments and weed harvesting and aeration all come out of the weed harvesting fund. It's all kind of jumbled into one fund.
Is that part of the surface water management?
No, that's a separate fund. It's not stormwater. This is for, for funding Comfort Lake, Forest Lake, when they do their weed treatments and then Clear Lake and then when we aerate Shields Lake in the winter and then paying for the repairs for the weed harvester when city staff does a weed harvester. It just kind of gets all lumped into one, one fund, just to kind of track it better that way.
Could you send to council the details of that fund, where it's sitting, fund balance? And it'd be helpful to just understand overall impact of this request.
Yes.
And then also part of that, I would be interested in what we spend on Forest Lake. You mentioned Shields Lake. Be good to just see, you know, where those dollars are going. One of my, you know, this is essentially, although it's front loading and potentially preventing future year expenses, this is a sizable increase. And if we're prepared to make it here, are we also prepared to make it for other lake, lake requests that may come in? I think we should just be thoughtful of that, given it's a sizable increase.
I believe just off the top of my head, we hoped sixty thousand dollars for Comfort, to pay Comfort Lake Forest Lake to treat Forest Lake.
Okay.
So we basically pay them to treat the lake instead of us doing it with our staff and that. So I, I believe it's right around sixty thousand. That's been kind of stepping up every year too.
But it goes directly to the Comfort Lake, Forest Lake?
It goes to them, but then direct goes to the contractor who's doing the work. So they just kind of, they do the legwork of hiring and, you know, just listing quotes and-
My concern is though Clear Lake is not in their district, is it? It's Race Lake.
It's Race.
Race Creek, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's, that's an issue. So we'd have to figure out how to, yeah, that... I know how that funding works within their liaison and that kind of thing, but it, but it's not in their district and they're going to spend that money back on that Clear Lake.
No, it's separated out. I mean, within that fund, part of that, our fund balance, we have like almost seventy thousand in their year and we spend about sixty nine thousand five hundred every year. But sixty, sixty thousand of it goes to, probably a little bit less than that goes to Comfort Lake, Forest Lake to treat, Forest Lake. And then seven, five to seven thousand goes to Clear Lake, Lake Association to treat Clear Lake. We spend about five thousand dollars to aerate Shields and then just basic repair and maintenance to-
Sorry, Dave, I wasn't, I did, I misunderstood your statement. I just wanted to clarify that. Okay?
It's all broken down, but just kind of all in one.
All right, got it. You bet.
The letter reference, have they applied to the, to the, the appropriate watershed district?
I do not know.
For funding? That would be something to explore with them as well.
We will ask them back when you're, when we put it on the agenda for a vote.
Mr. Waller was just here. We could have asked him, but he, he had to leave before a meeting, so.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to look at our fund balance and make sure we're not busting the, the budget here and then go from there. I know, I know that, no actions, but that's kind of the way I feel about it, so.
I would agree.
Are there any source, other sources, potential sources of funding?
I think like was mentioned earlier, the, maybe the county may have some funds for that, but I wouldn't really count on that.
Okay, but internally here?
Oh no, you would have to, I mean, I mean, you'd have to, you'd have to look at the, your different funds and balances and where you could possibly take them.
Okay.
If you wanted to do that.
Madam Mayor, I, I got the impression reading this that this was kind of an all or nothing thing. You can't sort of treat part of the axis weed. In order to do this, we got to do the whole lake. It's sort of an all or nothing request.
Yes, yes. I mean, usually when you do treatment, most of the time when you do treatment, I shouldn't generalize, but you usually do the, where the weeds are, are, and not treat where they're not, obviously. But yeah, you usually do the whole lake or else it's really not very effective.
On Forest Lake, we've, they've danced around which weeds we're going to treat on a given year.
Right.
But this is all one weed.
Yeah, this is the milfoil and, and some of the other, and I forget the name of the ones, but I know milfoil that, that they have problems with. And like I said, this is a due process. They're hoping will really knock these weeds out.
And it looks like it's becoming increasingly resistant to more conventional treatments. This is kind of a-
Yeah, I'm not sure of, of the science there, but it also depends on the year. Some years are better than, than others, some are worse, depending on whatever drives those plants, so.
Is there a public access on that lake?
Yes.
Besides the one on Eureka?
In council discussion, please. Further, further questions of staff or things we would like to see when this comes back? Sounds like we have some questions around fund balance and sources of where that fund balance comes from. Would also like to see, I guess, questions back to the watershed, or back to the Clear Lake Association on any potential Race Creek watershed district grant availability. And if they pursued that, it'd be helpful to understand that. Really it's a question of ultimately funding and where, where that source of revenue is and if we're comfortable using it for this purpose or, and what that might mean for that fund balance.
You know, I guess when that comes back from staff, something to consider is that there's been times where this really is front loading what would have been a cash flow stream over multiple years. We have in other situations made a decision that to allow a fund to go negative for a short period of time if it were going to recover in future years. So if that helped to bridge the gap, personally, I'm, that enorm small negative balance, I would be okay with, but it's got to be part of a long-term plan. Again, recognizing that this is front loading, which otherwise has been annual expenses.
And I think understanding, and you mentioned this, I believe, understanding other needs within our community, our, other needs with our lakes in our community as well, so that we're kind of looking at this as a whole. So that would be what I would, I would request, if we can assess that in some way.
Great. Staff, feel like next steps are clear? Very good. Okay, moving on to staff updates. Donovan?
Yes, I'd like to report that I got an email from the Boltland Bank planners who are, who are assisting us with our comprehensive plan update, asking questions. Since our time for receiving information or input from affected jurisdictions, like our neighboring municipalities, Washington District, County, the time is drawing to a close. And so, in April, we'll be bringing forth a, a comprehensive plan for council's review and then sending it off to Met Council for their review before we can do formal adoption. So look for that. And also, in reference to what Mayor Bain said earlier regarding some of the zoning code, is that following adoption of the comprehensive plan, state law requires us to amend the zoning code where it's inconsistent with the, the comprehensive plan. So we'll look for like a comprehensive rezoning to make sure they're both consistent in the future, so. And I look forward to using this little workshop time following each meeting to kind of-
Please.
Yeah, piece that out a little bit, so there's not, you know, the, kind of a blizzard of information at one point because it's, it's a money month process, many discussions, following city council, involving planning commissions and stakeholders to, I believe, you know, address some things we've seen in the last ten years as well as make sure that it fits well with the comprehensive plan, vision for the community. So look forward to that work.
Break it up for us, please.
Please, of course.
Thank you. Chief Newman?
On March fourteenth coming up here, we have a joint fire board meeting scheduled, seven o'clock here at the city center.
Very good.
I have nothing else. Unless you have something for me.
Anything for Chief Newman? Donovan, one more.
I'd also, I'd like to add too that on March eighteenth, we're having the joint EDA planning commission and city council workshop to, to participate in the Minnesota Urban Land Institute's Navigating Your Competitive Future workshop, which I think will be really informative for all staff and, and decision makers.
Very good. Thank you.
A few things. We, I, I'd like to thank the council for approving the P card today. That'll go a long way. If those unfamiliar with it, we will begin to get rebates on things we buy with the purchasing card, just like you do at your house. We haven't done that before, so we will be trying to do as many major purchases as possible on, on the P card so we can get, get a rebate. Those can add up pretty quickly, especially with some of the bills that we have to pay. So I think that's a good thing to bring some money back and save us some more money. Just on the strategic plan, we've, we've sent some more information out to the, to the strategic plan world and have actually started getting some responses on interests, so that I think is good. The finance director and the deputy clerk's position are both being our list- clerk's position are both being, are listed and have been out for a while with the closing date of April 1st, so we're hoping we get some good candidates for both of those positions. For those interested in the I-35 construction, there's a open house from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, March 19th, at the Columbus City Hall. I'll tell, tell you all you need to know about the I-35 split project. And finally, on the 18th, a week from today, we have the Urban Land Institute coming to speak and to walk us through with the EDA and the, and the council with the joint meeting, so I am excited to welcome them to the, to the city.
Thank you, Your Honor. No update?
Very good, thank you. Ryan?
No update this evening, unless you have questions?
For Ryan? Very good.
Couple things. Weight restrictions come on, on Friday, so if you get calls from anybody or anybody questioning, we'll get that up on the website. We usually have a pretty good package showing all the city streets are bivotum, which makes it pretty easy for us, so, but we do not give permits, so, so there's no exceptions to that, that rule. Second thing, we're doing kind of a switcheroo here. Now, we're going to get a bunch of rain instead of snow.
Yeah.
So, crews will be out, we're out today, tomorrow, and Wednesday cleaning catch basins. We're not going to get to all of them. There's probably about 2,500 to 3,000, and we won't get them all. So, there's, if we get that amount of rain, we're going to get localized flooding, so, you know, don't be afraid to, you know, residents, don't be afraid to call and let us know where these are. We can't be everywhere at once, but let us know if roads are starting to fill up, and, and we'll get out there, so. That's all I have.
Questions for Dave?
Just a comment. Have, have you guys been getting any sleep?
I was getting some. I was, I was gone for the last.
You look a little tan.
I caught up on mine. They don't, yeah, the, the guys are just, it's constant, so.
It's been quite a winter, so.
Yeah.
I, I just want to say thanks, Dave. And it includes the airport stuff, too. I mean, it's a, the last thing that needs to be done in all time, and, but it does, and I appreciate it. So, thank you.
Yep.
I'll echo those comments, and at some point, it'd be helpful to, just recognizing it's been a season of little sleep for Public Works, understand where we sit from a budget perspective. Sometimes that, I appreciate causes drain, and so for us as council to have visibility to that, so we can just be prepared and think about that in the year ahead. Be good to know where we sit.
Yeah, once, once this month finishes up, I should be able to get a pretty good grasp on where we sat last year to this year, and, you know, I handed in a stack of gas receipts about that, that night, so it's, you know, I'm sure fuel, and then overtime as well. It's been a lot of, a hundred to 120 hours a week, pretty much everybody, so. But I should be able to get a good grasp on that by the end of March, or that first meeting in April, to present something together, just to let you know.
Be good to just understand where we sit, so we can calibrate for the summer ahead.
Good.
Good, thank you. With that, council updates. Sam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was at three different meetings. The first one started with the Airport Commission, and one of the things we talked about tonight was the hangar lease change. That was for the rental hangar, and so that was a good done deal. And the other part of the discussion was, we're trying to figure out where we can add nine new hangars there, right on property that needs to get utilized, and we could, you know, get, it gets, and there's, I think 11 people signed up that are interested in doing such a thing. So, the engineers are working with Mendat to see how that would work, and if in fact the funding is available and that sort of thing. Also, they're, they're also working on, and this will take years, but they're approaching the feds about working on possible instrument approach into Forest Lake sometime, so, but that'll take a long, long time, and, but you got to, with the feds, you have to get your foot in the door and kind of keep pushing, because it takes a lot of study on their part, so. Okay, and the next meeting I was at was the watershed meeting, but then it turned out to be not a meeting because they didn't have a quorum, so I had to cancel that night. They had a meeting a couple days later in their office at 3:00 or 3:30 in the afternoon, but I couldn't make that one, so, sorry about that. And then the school district meeting that took place last Thursday, there was nothing really earth shattering there. It was policy discussions and that sort of thing, so really nothing too earth shattering there with school, so. That's all I have for right now. Thanks.
Very good. Kathy?
I attended the vaping community presentation at Hozana last week, fairly well-attended, a little down, weather wasn't great that evening, but those that were there got a lot out of it. I attended the YMCA Community Board meeting, and then the Wise Ecody Innovation Center at Gavada Commons. This is a kind of a hands-on experiential learning opportunity in partnership with the Science Museum of Minnesota, and it allows sort of this deeper dive into some social inclusion and equity activities. It was really kind of a transformational experience, and I, I do see some potential opportunities for a Human Rights Commission. And the City of Hastings is doing some great work in partnership with?
Yep.
The Equity Innovation Center. Attending the senior center board of directors meeting this coming Thursday, really looking forward to the ULI workshop next week, and then just acknowledging some citizen communication, Mr. Jensen regarding that Tannersbrook development ongoing. I know city administration is doing a good job communicating there back and forth. The citizen regarding the speeding and dust issue on Heath, and I just wanted to thank our PD for their prompt response to the speeding concerns there, and it appears that everything's okay, and I'm sure the dust issue will be addressed when it's dusty again. And then, of course, the Clear Lake Association and acknowledging the communication from Washington County Public Health Director Lowell Johnson. That's it for me.
Kelly?
I attended the Planning Commission meeting last, I think it was last week? Seems like it was, yeah, last week. Well, it was such a quick meeting. It wasn't very long. Essentially, we talked about the, the apartment building and signs and one-bedroom apartments, but, and then they decided to wait to elect their next chair and co-chair until our snowbirds come back, back to Forest Lake for the summer, or spring, I should say. And then I attended my first Rush Line Policy Committee, and it was a little bit of my worlds colliding. It was a lot of the people I interact with on my day job there, and so it was great to see a lot of familiar faces. And again, that Rush Line is still in an environmental study, so really interesting.
Mr. Gerard?
I attended the Planning Commission meeting, really just to thank them for all of their effort and, and kind words and cooperation on all the years I was on there.
Very good. Thank you.
Quick update. I've had a number of discussions and meetings with businesses, community members about potential future projects that will be coming before both either EDA and/or council. Working on some details around next steps on our trash RFP, and that will be on a future council workshop for us to dive a little bit deeper into what that, what is going, what that is going to contain. Had a meeting this morning with Forest Lake Area Schools, and Patrick and Jamie also attended, really to talk about the future green space that they have planned for the CLC. Jamie will be giving an update to Parks, Lakes and Trails, and also be giving an update to the Fenway Parks Commission. As everyone knows, we recently acquired the 10 acres adjacent to Fenway Field, and now with both the city and the school district developing green space. Really, today's conversation was just to agree to, as those plans develop, let's work together, and work together on assessing to get, together what the community's needs are for those green spaces, and kind of have a joint partnership between the city, the law, and the school district community. It will also be at that table just as those plans develop. So, today was really just a commitment to work together, and future items to be discussed, both with Parks, Lakes and Trails, the school district, and the Fenway Advisory Board, so. Good introductory discussion. Also, a reminder of the joint workshop has been already announced a couple of times. We had previously talked about starting at 6:30. We're actually going to start at 6:00, because we will spend the first 30 minutes giving an update on the whole property, just kind of an update from what has happened since we last workshopped that topic. So, just have that on your agenda. So, 6:00 start time next Monday. We already talked about my feedback, I already gave my feedback on tobacco ordinance, it's an expedited process, and we'll workshop that in a future meeting as well. What does that look like? Wanted to, our next scheduled council meeting is March 25th, which is the week of Forest Lake's spring break. There are times we have had a quorum, and we have had a meeting, and there's times quorum's been a challenge, so I just wanted to do a quick headcount for that meeting. Any planned time to be out of town? Any quorum issues with that meeting that's expected?
I don't have a problem.
No, no problem. I will be the only one out of town, and so we will, I will hand the gavel over to Councilmember Husnick for that evening, and let's plan on having a meeting as scheduled then. We have an opening on the Planning Commission, and that, that group, because of current travel plans for that group, sometimes can be quorum challenged. The next meeting this Wednesday is open, or has been canceled. I will look to have a Planning Commission appointment for you to consider on the 25th, so that we will have that, that open position filled before the next meeting. So, trying to actively manage that quorum and having the right people in the right place. And speaking of right people in the right place, also, let's do, on the March 25th meeting, let's do commission reassignment. We have Councilmember Gerard, who does not have any current assignments, and so over the next couple of weeks, I will connect with each one of you individually, so we can get that table set. If you are open to it, I would suggest an April 1st effective date, so reshuffle the deck. You could individually send to Patrick any plans that you would like, any kind of, what's working well with your schedule, what might be a challenge with your schedule. We will reshuffle the deck, looking for an April 1st effective date, unless there's any requests to do otherwise.
Did you want us to start a controversy while you're gone, or anything?
Please no.
Okay.
Please no.
I was just wondering.
I feel comfortable that I'm leaving in. And then Susan mentioned the community downtown development activities. Thank you for doing that. The, your feedback was heard. I would recommend we put a member of council, if you are open to having a member of council on that board. Let's talk afterwards, because we'd like to consider some direct involvement, but appreciate the work that group is doing. I think that is it. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, unless there's anything else to come before council.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, and we're adjourned.